Good morning, everybody. I'll call it order the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, July 17, 2018. And I would ask if everybody please join the board as we honor America with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda, as always, is public comment number one. It's an opportunity for members of the public to comment on really anything you want to, specifically items on today's agenda. But if you've got something else you'd like to comment on before we really get going in the meeting, come right on up. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to agency reports. And first, we get to hear from our friend Bill Vaughn telling us about everything happening at Mainstream.
Good morning, Bill.
Hi, Bill.
Nice to see you.
Glad you're here. So has it been a year since you've been here, really?
It's been a year.
Wow.
So the nice thing is it's been such a tough year for everybody, I think, with managed care and kind of addressing some of the issues there that's...
We're still here a year later.
So we're gonna start with that, right? Mainstream Living, I'm the president and CEO for Mainstream Living. We serve about 500 individuals in four different counties on a daily basis. And Mainstream currently serves individuals in two programs in Story County. We have a home and community-based services program and the center, which does day habilitation, community integration services. Some individuals may receive more than one type of services, while others may only receive one specific service. Majority of individuals we serve receive Medicaid funding. A few received their funding from Story County. Typically, those are people that are on the Medicaid waiting list but have not yet received those.
Yep.
The total number of individuals serving Story County here is follows. Home and community-based services, now this is Story County. Hourly support community living, we provide that to 18 individuals. Daily support community living, we provide that to 43 individuals at 15 different sites. Medically fragile people, we serve five of them at one location, which is a heavy-duty one. Both of them have seen it.
Uh-huh.
Then we have the Mainstream Center, which does the day habilitation services and some supportive employment. We have day habilitation at the Milk for 54 individuals. Day habilitation through our H program, which is the highest functioning individual we serve with disabilities. And there's 26 individuals currently going to that. Day habilitation for sensory services, we had 15 individuals. That was one of the casualties this last year. We had to close that program down because the managed care organizations weren't willing to fund it at the level that we need to. We still have the facility. We still use the services for some people, but we don't staff it as heavily and aren't able to provide as heavy of the services we work for because most people need it. And then we have enclaves with Danfoss and Sauer. Well, we have roughly 39 individuals that go to the work enclave and are supervised within those businesses. Of the number above, Story County currently pays for one individual receiving quarter-hour enclave services during fiscal years 16 and 17. We receive $656. We are on track to receive $1,975 for this fiscal year. We requested $750 for fiscal year 18, '19, and were allocated $950.
That doesn't happen often.
No. You guys work with us very well and you understand that we have to be flexible until we get that services and make sure that happens for people. We greatly appreciate that. Story County currently pays for four individuals receiving full day habilitation services. In FY '16, '17, we received $28,793. We're on track to receive $14,499 this fiscal year. We requested for next year's budget, $39,000, and we're allocated to $39,000. And again, that's flexible because some people might qualify Medicaid and then we wouldn't be drawing that down, but...
What did we allocate this year? So you're on track to receive $14,499. What was in the budget?
It was $14,499.
Okay.
And Story County currently pays for two individuals receiving quarter-hour SCL services. In '16, '17, we received $5,369. We're on track to receive $2,039 this fiscal year. We requested $6,000 for next year, and we're allocated, you proved, $6,000.
I know it's semantics, but I think there's some accuracy there, too. Would not be more the region is providing these dollars than Story County?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It would be a regional thing, right?
Clearly, yes, but it's just like it's delivered on a regional basis. Okay, it's just semantics.
I can change the report if you'd like.
No. Just... Ultimately, those dollars come from...
Come from Story County through the region to Bill and his organization. But it's semantics. There's nothing more.
I'll make sure that they reflect that next year.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Marty. Story County currently pays for one individual receiving quarter-hour day habilitation services. In '16, '17, we received $186. We're on track to receive $94 for this fiscal year, and we requested $250 for next year. And that's been allocated. Mainstream also requested to receive a proposal for new and expanded services for fiscal year '19 and '20. This is a request that's outstanding right now. What that is, is to cover the difference between what we get reimbursed for those enclave services and what it actually costs us has gone up to provide supervision support at Sauer and Danfoss. And that will... We're currently developing those budgets, but we'll be submitting that as well.
Important program.
One of those... I'm sorry, one of the biggest issues I didn't mention in here was transportation.
Right.
Transportation was a huge issue for us this year. I know that you've in Story County addressed that as well. At one point, our transportation providers for last year, we would have paid $550,000 to HERA. This year, that wasn't an option for us.
Right.
In fact, our original budget had us losing $704,000 on transportation services alone. So we had to marshal our own resources with our existing vehicles and kind of work with HERA through that as well. That was one of the disappointments for this year, that that wasn't really included in the rate structure. And at the last minute, the tiers were presented and we were informed that we would be asked to provide same services we did this past year for about $2.5 million less than what we received prior year.
And as those are represented, it was a very abrupt decision, and as they were beginning to be aware of the fact that you were gonna step away from that.
Yeah, but strictly based on available funding and the rates that are being paid for the services that are offered, so now Mainstream, in order to make the bottom line work, had to absorb that you've got to provide the services directly instead of going through a third party.
Absolutely.
Now, I understand the way that you internalized it. It's just like it went in a very quick manner when you found out where you stood, and I get why you did.
Well, and it was really disappointing because we were a part of those statewide tier-setting groups, and that was never part of the discussion.
Right.
Any questions or anything else I can...
No, it's very straightforward. Congratulations, and I hope you guys have some success coming forward with your changes.
Well, I would just say, I know you spent a lot of years at Mainstream, and I know that, you know, it's a little bit of a roller coaster in terms of the way funding works. I believe we're at one of the dips right now in the roller coaster of how funding works. And so appreciative to all the extra efforts you guys have put in and frankly, some of the tough decisions that you've got to make in order to go ahead and provide those core services that you're providing.
It can be very challenging. I've been at Mainstream for 38 years. Mainstream's been around since 1975. This last flood that came through, the Warmaugh Creek flooded out one of our medically fragile homes. But I've had a lot of support from United Healthcare, the Governor's Office, State Director. So that's in Polk County, but I thought I would share that as well, that there are a number of challenges that we face. Thank you very much for your support. Appreciate that. And I do support the support from the region. I was on advisory committee for a number of years and just termed out here recently, but the county and the region have a number of wonderful things going on, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And Bill, thank you so much. And Mainstream is known, you know, not just in Story County and not just in central Iowa, but in all of Iowa for the services that you provide. And actually, interesting enough, I got a call from one of your good old friends, Reno Burke, the other day. And so he always makes me think of all the good things with Mainstream.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we've got Jane Underhill from Storytime Childcare. Hi, Jane.
Hey.
Good morning.
We need to clone Storytime and put it in about four other small towns. Can you make that happen for me?
I'd have to have a little help from you guys.
Tell us what it takes, Jane.
I'm Jane Underhill from Maxwell Storytime Childcare. Storytime provides full-time infant preschool and before and after school care. We are at full capacity right now, and at least half the kids are funded on levels one and two of asset. My staff, we really have no major turnover with them, which is important to the kids and the families. And we provide an excellent program for education and care instability for the kids, you know, so they know that the 12 hours they're there, it's the same people and they're cared for. One of the obstacles we've ran into this year is the DHS has changed the way the food programs have to be. You have to... It's gonna make our expenses go up with that because they have to provide more food. The kids have to have a lot more different options, and the type of food you have to get, you know, everything has to be like your spaghetti noodles or bread. They have to be all the sweet and different things. The state's changed that up a lot. And that's about, you know, we've just had all three different things for breakfast, snacks, and lunch, which is, you know, it's just the way it is. One thing we are gonna do, where I'm trying to get it put together, is we're gonna try to change up our... Reban the playground. Playground means a lot of construction on it, and so I'm gonna try to get some things going on that, get some help for that, and wish we'd put up a new fence and the ground surface and fix the sandbox and get some type of different shading we have for the playground. But otherwise, things have grown great. We, like I said, we're at full capacity, and I had to hire another teacher for the baby room because we had babies on the waiting list.
Right.
Which is good because that baby has a brother or sister, so you've got them...
Right on through, right?
Uh-huh. So, but things have grown well.
Good. Well, we talk about, we use you as the example pretty regularly when we talk about Story County is on the threshold or all the way into being kind of a daycare desert. I mean, especially at the younger ages. And what you're doing is a model that we try to hold up to others who may want to do it in some of our other small towns.
Yeah, we're trying. I mean, we have people from Huxley because the daycares in Huxley are full, so they come to us, and, you know, we have them for a year or two while they're on the waiting list over there. We've had people come down from Colo and a lot of different places.
It is something. Marty?
Jane, Rick touched on it, and you just spoke about it, is the fact that one of the things you go and we go into a lot of different meetings with different organizations. And the thing is, here in Story County, once the notice is given medically to a couple that they're getting expectant child, the second thing they tell them, don't pick out colors, don't pick out other things, go find a provider.
Right.
Because you work in conjunction with the city of Maxwell? Is that... Do you have a...
Well...
Because are you in that building? Is that a city-owned building?
No, it is not.
Okay.
It's owned by a board. They run it as a... They run it as their nonprofit, and it's run by a board, a community center. So, no, we just rent from them. They have no association with us. They're separate, and the city, they don't have any... We used to get funding from the city years ago...
Right.
To help us pay half our rent, and they don't do that any longer, so...
Now, because you look into the smaller communities and even here in Nevada, one of the... It's not too much of a stretch to say, if you were looking to create your own business with a likelihood of success, if you had a facility available and childcare was something that you had a calling towards, I think your likelihood of bright future exists. And a lot of people don't realize that.
Yeah.
And once again, Rick says that you are spoken about in the sense that, I guess my perception was that you were in, you had some existence with the city of Maxwell. Now I stand corrected, so because you were on the backside of it there.
Yep, we're just on the backside, and we hold our own.
Okay, well, congratulations. I really do hope for the growth. We worry about the infrastructure, we worry about the houses, we worry about the jobs, but another component of, you know, keep people moving here and joining us is the fact they need childcare.
Right, yeah. And that's how our capacity is really filled within this last year. We have a lot of new people moving into Maxwell.
Last question, what's your waiting list look like? I mean, you said you have people waiting to get in.
We did. We filled them for the summer, and I think I'll probably... It depends on a couple families that they're called in and they're thinking about moving to Maxwell. That's how they've practiced, so, you know, right now. We should be good, though, once the school ages are back to school. Then we have more openings for during the day.
Okay.
So, no, we're doing great.
Well, thank you for what you do for Story County.
Well, Jane, you and your staff do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
We're so appreciative, absolutely. Let us know as you start to solidify what you want to do with playground, let us know, you know, both in our formal capacity but also in an individual capacity, how we can be helpful.
Okay, yeah, I've got the kids input, too, on that.
Outstanding.
It'll be interesting.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Yep, you, too.
Next is the VA Quarterly Report. Brett McLean and our new Chair of Veterans Affairs, Lynn Lake.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I'm gonna give you a quarterly report here. I'm gonna have some numbers for you this morning. This period covers April 1 to June 30, greeting from the Commission of Veterans Affairs. During the last quarter, we assisted five veterans with county VA benefits. Two veterans came in for rent assistance at $720. Two veterans came in for utility assistance, $305.31. And one family came in for burial assistance, $1,916, for a grand total of $2,941.31. Aaron and I have been really busy during the quarter because during the quarter, we interviewed 404 veterans and/or surviving spouses for federal, state, and county VA benefits. The average for the quarter was $134.66 per month for the quarter. And I kind of went in and did some stats on this. For FY '18, we've seen 1,326 veterans and surviving spouses. 1,063 of those were men, 263 are women. So, and a lot of those were surviving spouses. Getting a few female veterans, though, we're finding a few of them along the way. The average per month was $110.5 for the year with an increase of $18.2 per month in the last year. I wanted to give you a little bit of what they call a GDX report. We guess it's from the federal VA. It's what the federal VA says they're sending to Story County as in money. I want to start with FY '15 and work to FY '17. So in FY '15, they sent $21.886 million to Story County, veterans and surviving spouses. In '16, we increased that by $32,000, which brought it $21.8. And then in '17, we increased it by $2.3 million, bringing that total to $24.2 million in the last FY. And the VA's behind by one FY, so that's the latest and greatest on that. And I looked at the population. If I go back to FY '15, we had 5,561 veterans. The next year, we dropped by 1,345 veterans, bringing that total to 4,216. And then FY '17, we dropped 42. And so our latest and greatest number is 4,174 veterans. And so that's kind of, that's probably an answer for this, you know, only going up 32,000, that one year over, this last year, over 2 million. You know, they either died or they moved. And if they had benefits, those stopped. So anyway, I just kind of wanted to give the board those kind of numbers. For our fourth quarter, on our interviews, we've seen 40 World War II veterans, 58 served during Korea, 172 Vietnam, 23 Persian Gulf, 31 peacetime in the Cold War, and 27 Iraq or Afghanistan. 53 surviving spouses of veterans, and we enrolled 32 in the VA healthcare program. Vietnam veterans book, we've been issuing those since a year ago in June. So during the quarter, we issued out 51 Vietnam books. That brought our total issued at 358. We still have books left. We have 144 in our inventory as of this morning, so still good on that. As a matter of fact, when I check other counties, they all have plenty of books, so I'm not thinking they're gonna order anymore. In addition, we have several duffel bags with new clothes in them that were given out to at-risk veterans of being homeless or homeless veterans. And these bags are given to us by Vietnam Veterans of America. John Cost and his group provide those with us. I think we would have some out at the jail. So I think in the county, we just have a VA in at the jail. Outreach. On Friday, May 18, we held our Veterans Appreciation Day in Ames at the Moose Lodge. Volunteer Stacy Bane gave 48 haircuts. I tried to get a haircut myself, but she was just busy. We enrolled 24 into the VA healthcare system. 30 Vietnam books were given out in lapel pins. Dan Grous provided us with music, and by the way, he's also providing music for RagBri in Ames. Lunch was provided to 165 veterans and 65 spouses. And thanks to Hy-Vee for their donation. And Terry Mylan from Nevada here smoked our meat for us. A record turnout for the books, for sure, at that event. Want to thank Marty for coming out to that event. Not only did he come out to the event, but he stuck around a little while and got to talk to some veterans and hear their concerns.
Everybody has their own story, and you can give some people an opportunity to talk to you and learn some great things. I tell you what, and the takeaway, I'll speak to it later, I'll speak to it now, is the fact that they aren't all Story County vets.
Oh, no, we're drawn from all over the place. This has turned into an unsuitable program.
Yeah. Also, at that event, the Commission presented a thank you plaque to Hy-Vee for all the support they've given the office and our veterans in Story County. You know, the Freedom Flights, they've had a lot of Honor Flights, and it just seems like anytime we need some food or donuts or water or whatever, it's like, get a grocery cart and go get what you need, Brett, and, you know, and just take care of us that way.
Congratulations. I think you grew that relationship, Brett.
Yeah. Over the last 18 or 19 years, I guess, that we've been doing the supermarket, it has been growing. Our first one, we only had seven people show up, so you can see. And we're getting to the point where we just need more space.
Well, we're past getting to that point. We need more space.
Yeah, we needed that. And so actually, we have the Plex in Ames booked for our supermarket, November the 13th. So that's where we're...
But there's a cost there. I mean, it's not a big cost. I think, what, $500 is what it's gonna cost us to go there.
Yep.
And so what I've indicated to the Commission is try to do it within the available budget that we have, but if something starts to happen, this is important enough, come back to the board and let us know if we can be helpful. Second thing I would say about that, just in a conversation that Lynn and Deb and I had in the last few days, if there's an opportunity, I know we went through, boy, we went through a lot of new merchandise that came in, and it's really a matter of getting it transported from Des Moines up here. And so let's get creative and figure out ways that we can be helpful in transporting some of these items so that we really have a full-on opportunity for our veterans.
Yep, yep. Yeah, we talked about that, where we can kind of gear up for the winter with coats, hats, gloves, boots, socks, that kind of stuff, yeah. Next week, we actually have the, a little outreach program going on. It's July the 27th, from 8 to 4, in our parking lot at the Story County Human Service Center. Disabled American veterans, they're gonna have their mobile service van. And so it's service officers in these vans that will be able to help veterans file claims. So they usually come up, come see us about once a year with their van, and we set up things outside and get some of our veterans in as the seat of the AV. Some training that's been completed and some upcoming one. April 17 to 19, Aaron and I attended the Iowa Association of County Commission, a Veteran Service Officer School that was held in Des Moines. June 2 to the 8th, I attended the National VA School, which is held, was held in Reno, Nevada. And October 16th, in Des Moines, we have a one-day school for our commissioners. They're gonna, you know, they get schooled on how to run a meeting to the 35B code, the state code for VA, HIPAA, all those kind of fun things. And then October 16, 17, and 18, Aaron and I will be at the VA State School of Instruction. During our June meeting, the Commission, the Commission meeting, they organized and held elections. Lynn Lethrow is now serving as our Commission Chair, and Amy Rosenberg will continue to stay on as Secretary.
Outstanding.
One new program that we kind of brought into play, it seems like we're missing a lot of surviving spouses on benefits, you know? Their loved one will pass away, they'll be presented with a flag, a folded-up flag, you know? And a lot of times, I kept thinking about a lot of people I know, where they don't know what to do with it. They take it home, it's maybe in plastic, they put it on a shelf. What do you do with it now? So anyway, we purchased some flag boxes, those turn, the triangle ones. We got a good deal at Hobby Lobby at about $20 a flag box. And so sending out letters now to the funeral home directors, as they do funerals, but I can't attend them all, let the surviving spouse know to come to the office to get a flag box. And, well, they're not just gonna come there and get that.
Right.
They're gonna, here are some benefits from Aaron and I, and maybe we can, we can find some benefits for them that way.
Outstanding.
So there's a lot that are being missed with those folks. And, well, that's all I have. I'm gonna turn it over to our Chair for any words he might have. He's always got good news for you.
Well, I've got, anytime you can turn in a check, that's good news, isn't it? Well, thank you, anyway, for having the confidence in me coming, going forward as far as being the Chair. Pat did a good job.
Absolutely.
I like that. And he kept the meetings going. He really struggles sometimes because we get a little long-winded in our conversations, but he did, he did a good job. So he's gonna be there to help support me, get me broke in. It's been a little while since I've been, since I've had to run a meeting.
Not that long.
But Robert's rules is the same all over, so, anyway. Brett approached me with this check, and he asked me to bring this forward to, to give to the people here at Story County Building. And this is, this was approved by legislation. The legislative intent of this state fund is to help the county VA-reach veterans who have not been connected or contacted with their, with their benefits. Funds should be used to increase, like office hours, go out to the community with outreach events, and we've talked about that, and we're, we're still noodling that and trying to figure out the best way to go forward. I talked with Brett on that, and I'll need to talk with Deb again and then go to the Commission. And filling federal claims or applications for state benefits. So I've got a check here for $10,000 that we'll leave here on our way out, and I think this is, this is the greatest. I don't know, was you expecting this to come in? You was expecting it.
Yeah, it was, last year, it was under that amount. It was like $9,450 is what we received. It was like nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars is what we received. I believe at our budget hearing, I kind of put it in our budget, so I was hoping it would come, but, so, it arrived yesterday, so we'll give it to the county auditor.
Well, so appreciative of the work the entire commission does, but Brett specifically you, so, you're a great director in everything you do, but where you really go above and beyond, and where you exceed what I think happens anywhere else in the state, is when you get out and see our veterans or our surviving spouses in their residence, right? Whether it's in one of the nursing homes or in their home, and so, as Lynn and I talked this through, one of the challenges we've got structurally is to figure out more creative ways to allow you the freedom necessary to be able to get out and do even more of that. That's where you're at your best, and that's where we go above and beyond in what we provide in Story County. So what I would ask of you is, help us be creative in figuring out ways to allow you to do that even more. The fortunate thing is, you know, with Aaron back in the office, you know that things are covered really, really well there, you know, we've got it going, but I just want to commend you for the job you do, and know that we're committed to making sure you can do even more of that. The final thing I would ask Lynn is, if you wouldn't mind, just generally, no names, no places, but share the story you told me about the veteran that you came across in one of our small towns, and his experience as he finally found what was available to him with the Veterans Affairs Commission.
It's been a number of years ago, but this guy worked for me at Burke. He's, I think he was Air Force, and he was hurt, and it was Vietnam veteran area, error, and I kept hounding him to get him to see Brett, and he's not gonna do anything for me. He got mad at me, you know, a couple times, but being the boss, he can get mad, that's fine. I pushed him, and he finally, just this last year, I think, got all this paperwork done, went to Brett, got it done, and he got an eighty percent disability, which is about two thousand dollars a month. And this guy was struggling, so I said, why do you fight this? I mean, you gotta, you do this, so just get it done. And he did, and Brett can do him no wrong now, so.
I think I made an appointment with him, I was at Harland Borton's Estate Cell, and I seen him there. I think I made an appointment with him there to come in. So, yeah, sometimes you gotta twist arms sometimes.
Well, and it's such a great success story for how it ended up, but just think about the years that were missed that he could have been receiving these benefits.
He'd done out of service for thirty-five years, and this is all lost. You can't go back now. So, anyway.
Well, please extend our thanks to the rest of the commission for all the work that you all do, and let us know how we can be helpful.
Right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and look forward to what you're going to do. And I think you had some real wisdom, taking outside of the Moose. Moose had served you for quite a long time, and it was a wonderful experience to walk through there and see everybody, because, you know, I think people may go a whole year or six months and not see one another, and then they reconnect, and it's quite obvious. But on an accessibility basis, the Moose probably wasn't the best location, and I think the Plex, Rick says it well, if the cost becomes an issue, we wanna hear about it. But then again, I know with Aaron and the commission, I have little worries about saying, go get them.
Absolutely. I know, Rick too, Marty and Lawrence, you guys have all been at the supermarket, so when we say that, you know what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
So hopefully, parking will be better.
I suspect it will.
So.
I think it's the right move.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Marty, we're consideration of minutes now from July tenth.
I would move as presented.
And our second, she, Sanders, I. No personnel actions today, consent agenda.
As presented.
Second, she, Sanders, I. That takes us down to public hearing items. And we do have a public hearing. We have First Consideration of Ordinance Two Seventy-Three amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map of Story County, and Resolution Nineteen O Two, Future Land Use Map Amendment. This is the Finch rezoning, and a lot to unpack here. Jerry and Ryan.
Good morning, guys. Good morning.
Well, let's give you some back information while Ryan's loading this far point up. This started as a home business permit renewal. Home business permits are renewed every year by our department under our ordinances. And the renewal came, I think it was in November of twenty seventeen, and we usually start by looking at aerial photography to start our process. And by looking at photography, we noticed that there was some outside storage, and looked like there were several vehicles, which prompted us to send what we call a friendly letter to the applicant, which turned into an onsite meeting at his property. I think we met for probably about an hour, hour and a half. I learned a lot about his operation, about when he started, about what his plans are going forward. Long and the short is, there were several piles of processed material that were brought back from projects, you know, different work that they had done, and several vehicles, several employees, and then operations in more than one building. And we'll go through some of the details of the home business permit requirements. But that prompted a letter to the applicant outlining what we saw as the options to address the issue. And the first thing was to provide us with a compliance schedule. The second thing that we addressed was, as an option, is adding onto a building so that the materials that were outside could be relocated to the building, locate to a new location within the county or elsewhere that's zoned for that use, or to submit a rezoning application, and that's what they decided to do.
Okay, go ahead and get started here, just some background information. The applicant's Todd Finch and Justin Dodge. We're within two miles of Kelly in Ames, and the district's there around the right. So the nature of the request is a rezoning request from the A-one district to commercial light industrial, future land use map amendment from rural residential to commercial industrial. It's about a ten-acre property, and the rezoned area will be about three and a half acres, the south four hundred and twenty-five feet. It was submitted in order for the operation of Finco Tree and Wood Services to continue at the subject property. It's currently not in compliance with the Story County Home Business Regulations, Chapter Eighty-nine point oh one. So at the July eleventh Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, it was unanimous recommendation of denial for the proposed rezoning from the A-one district to CLI, and the future land use map amendment from rural residential to commercial industrial. As well, there was a four-two vote recommending renewing the home business permit for Finco Tree and Wood Services with the conditions outlined by Planning and Development staff. So here we are, on the map, this is our subject property here, this is Kelly, and then Ames to the north, just under two miles away. Then, a little closer, here's our subject property, and several houses along this road here, and a couple down here as well. And then one more, just a little bit closer, to kind of get a good idea, our subject property is right here, and this south three and a half acres here is the portion looking to get rezoned. So with the use of the property, there's a single-family dwelling, kind of in the middle at the highest point of the property, an accessory building used for a garage and office back here, as well as a three-sided accessory building here for storing service vehicles. Let's see, there, right here is the numerous piles of processed and unprocessed wood, and then parking for employees is right here. There's multiple outbuildings right here for agricultural use. There's a gravel parking area here for two campers with electrical hookups, and then a propane tank here, and here are used for the dwelling and office. And then we have the thousand-foot drive, some planted native grass and trees on the north side here, and then one septic is used for the dwelling. So history of the business, the existing parcel was created in two thousand through a platter survey for the family dwelling to be constructed. Zoning permit application was submitted on October fifth, twenty-ten, requesting to construct a pole building, which was denied on the sixth because it was concluded that the building would be used for business purposes. An investigation of violation found an unpermitted business on the property, and a notice of violation was issued on October twenty-first. And a home business application was submitted on that same day. Proof of compliance was reported on the twenty-seventh, and the permit was issued on the twenty-eighth. One condition to the home business permit did state that the pole building could be constructed, but all outside storage must be stored inside. And at the time, the home business permit application indicated zero estimated customer trips per day, and zero estimated delivery vehicle trips per week. They owned eight service vehicles and employed three people, in addition to Mr. Finch. And this is a condition requiring the outside storage inside.
These are the home business permit requirements in Chapter Eighty-nine of the Story County Land Development Regulations. The items that are highlighted or bolded are the items that they're not in compliance with. The first thing is, the business must be a service or product-oriented activity. At least one individual residing in the dwelling should be employed in the business. The business must occupy less than half of the dwelling if they're gonna operate the business in the dwelling. Only one accessory building may be utilized for the business. The business shall not be a nuisance to surrounding, to the surrounding land owners in regards to appearance, noise, and so forth. Only one individual not residing in the dwelling may be employed at the business. Two service vehicles may be parked in areas visible from the road right of way and adjoining properties in A-one district. Also, there's another provision for home businesses in A-one district. If the vehicles are not used, it says they can be seen from the road right of way and adjacent properties. Eight talks about the outside storage or display of products shall not be allowed. Nine, the business shall not create traffic or delivery concerns in the immediate area. Ten, the business shall not diminish established values of surrounding properties. Eleven talks about meeting the same permit requirements. Twelve is the parking requirements, and thirteen is the lighting requirements. The A-one agricultural district statement of intent talks about to accommodate land uses compatible with ag and to protect ag land from encroachment of urban land uses, references the C-two-C plan, designates priority agricultural land as agricultural conservation areas. It says these areas are intended to preserve rural character by limiting development of most non-farm dwellings to larger lots. In some instances, the A-one district permits non-farm residential development on smaller lots in furtherance of the C-two-C plan goals and objectives. C-two-C, or excuse me, Commercial Light Industrial District Statement of Intent says to accommodate the full range of retail commercial services, which include wholesaling, warehousing, light industrial, lab manufacturing, also includes fabricating institutional activities in industrial locations. Says its intended uses are generally characterized by a minimum of obnoxious characteristics which might adversely affect surrounding development. This is the zoning map. The existing zoning map is the left map, and what's proposed is on the right-hand side. Subject property is outlined in red. So the subject property in the surrounding area is A-one agricultural district, is a commercial, or excuse me, an A-two agribusiness, a grain elevator used to the northeast. So as Ryan stated, the south four hundred and twenty-five feet of the subject property is proposed for the rezoning. The rest of it would stay A-one agriculture. Some notes from C-two-C plan, subject property is designated rural residential again. The north portion of the property is also agriculture and farm services, it's part of the Ames or Fringe Plan. However, the area that's proposed for rezoning is outside the Ames or Fringe Plan. Development of this property into residential housing lots could be an option due to its proposed land use of rural residential. I don't think that that's within the vision of the property owner, but that's something that could be considered with that land use designation. It would require rezoning and then support from Ames and Gilbert. Residential development will likely not occur, though, if that area is rezoned, if you have other uses in that proposed district which might impact the surrounding area. Rural residential development, I won't go into a lot of the detail, talks about market choices. Some of the principles are to ensure that new development is sensitive to predominantly rural nature of areas. It talks about clustering of sites to limit short-term and long-term costs associated with infrastructure improvements and distribution of public services. Talks about the necessity of taking access off of paved roads. Commercial industrial area, which is what was proposed, says supports long-term planning objective of accommodating future demand for types of commercial and industrial growth that may be best located in rural setting outside of urban areas. Some of those principles indicate that there's preference to clustering uses to limit, again, long-term costs associated with infrastructure improvements and distribution of public services. Says to support new and industrial development within incorporated areas. That comes up a few times in the comp plan, where infrastructure exists and extensions are logical. Talks about providing buffers to ag land and then mitigating stormwater runoff and soil erosion. This is the C-two-C land use map designation. Yellow is rural residential, that's the subject property. There's also about a one-acre parcel to the north and west. Everything else is designated agricultural conservation area. Ames or Fringe Plan map, you can see how the north, about two and three-quarter acres is designated ag and farm service, however, the proposed rezoning area is outside of that. We did notify Ames and Gilbert and still did not receive any responses.
Okay, so we can get some photographs here to get a better idea of the property. This is at the entrance, looking south from Two Hundred Eightieth. This is looking west on Two Hundred Eightieth. To the north across Two Hundred Eightieth, and then east. Okay, as we go down the drive here, this is looking east, we have some, you know, the planted trees and the native grass over here. This is the camper parking area with electrical hookups. We have the dwelling with the operation in the back to the south. Further down the drive, we have the business entrance. This is the three-sided building here with the parking and some of the, start of the wood inventory. Here's the business office and garage. And then this is kind of standing in the parking area, looking at the office and garage. These three buildings here are used for agricultural purposes. This is that three-sided building and the service vehicles. This is the employee vehicles and parking area, the little bit of the operation here going on when we were there. And the other side of that operation, a little bit, and then some of the wood inventory. And this is a good picture, so we have some full-length logs here in the back, and then logs kind of cut to size here, and then the resulting processed firewood. So as we go, here's those kind of full-length logs, and then rows of firewood. Here's a little bit of both, some of the firewood mounds here, and then cut logs there. This is mulch. And this is kind of miscellaneous wood debris, and we were a little concerned here with some of the lack of erosion control kind of into this field. So as we back out, this is on Two Hundred Eightieth Street, looking east at the property. And then this is on the North-South Road, Five Hundred Thirtieth Avenue, looking west. But in general, during the summer with corn, when the leaves are on the trees, this is the view from the Five Hundred Thirtieth Avenue. You know, it'd be very different if there were soybeans planted, or it was wintertime in the fall and winter. and in the fall and winter when the leaves aren't on the trees. So we have some standards for approval for rezoning. I can run through these quickly, but the proposed rezoning shall not conform to the, or shall conform to the Story County Development Plan. We don't believe that's the case. The proposed rezoning shall conform to statement of intent for the proposed district. We believe that is the case. So he's requesting commercial light industrial. So that allows for warehousing and manufacturing, which aligns with processing wood. But it also allows for fabrication and laboratory and institutional activities as well. The proposed rezoning shall be compatible with surrounding land uses and development patterns. Staff does not believe that's the case either. And then this kind of gets down to natural resource area, which is not applicable for the subject property as there's no natural resource area there. But it's still good to note that the process of reusing the wood is environmentally friendly. And this gets down to the LISA score. So just the LISA score for the property is 235, which allows, which is below the threshold which allows a rezoning application to be submitted.
Okay, just like we look at the items from the zoning ordinance, we look at items to consider for the C-2C map change. There's like six of these. The first one talks about the extent to which the change would be consistent with the comp plan goals and policies. There's a couple of prioritized goals. The first one talks about preserving and protecting and planning around physical characteristics of land. The second one, second highest is to protect ag resources. Again, this, the 10 acres was split out in 2000, houses built, accessory structures constructed, and then the business operation occurred. The goal three talks about the availability and capacity of local services and infrastructure. In this particular area, infrastructure is somewhat limited. There's rural water, there's no sanitary sewer, onsite septic's are pretty common, and onsite propane tanks. Second thing, evidence demonstrating the reason why the plan should be changed, including but not limited to whether new information has been, become available since the comp plan was adopted that supports reexamination of the plan. Again, the conference plan was approved in June of 2016. We did a pretty extensive outreach process during that time and there was no indication that this particular location was, would be a good location for a commercial or an industrial mode. Whether or not the change is needed to allow reasonable development of the site, again, much of the actual development has occurred. It's our understanding that there's really no future plans to grow the use of the site, to add additional buildings, additional staff, and that type of thing. Relationship with a proposed amendment to the supply and demand for particular land uses within the county and immediate vicinity of the site. Reviewing the economic development chapter, it identifies targeted industries such as technology industries, renewable energy. This is not one that's considered a targeted industry. We did try to compare this use to other uses. There's a couple of businesses that are actually located in the city of Ames in industrial setting, American Wood Products and American Tree Care. They're located situated, situated in an area where there's similar recycling reuse type activities. In this photo, you can see the vehicle salvage yard to the south and east. E, a demonstration that the proposed amendment has merit beyond the interest of the applicant. We think it primarily focuses on benefiting the applicant. They do provide service to customers throughout the county and then also provides the service of the firewood to restaurants, campgrounds, and that type of thing. All future industrial activity on this subject property will further compound this location's incompatibility with the surrounding land. G, consideration of the fiscal impact of the proposed amendment. Again, where the information from the applicant is that there's no plans for growth. However, if the area gets rezoned, the potential for growth on this site is a possibility and there may be some impacts to 280th.
Okay, so we had a conceptual review on June 7th, 2018, and Story County Assessor's Office said they would review the classification of the property for the 2019 assessment. The environmental health department asked if there was wastewater from either building used for the business and what method of treatment. The answer to those were no and none. So then we had multiple questions of our own, mostly, you know, about the business, how many employees, how many vehicles are owned, kind of getting an idea of the process, if any growth is expected. So those answers, you know, were there. We got a good idea of the operation. Here's a few more with the background. It started in 1982 and has been active on-site since 2000. Business is conducted all year long and material is brought on daily as well. We learned about the ag services too. And there's indication that no erosion control or landscape buffering was planned. And then we just kind of gave note that they are in the Ames or Infringe Plan, so notices would be sent to Kelly, Ames, and Gilbert. And if rezoning occurs and there was ever a change in ownership, an easement would most likely be required. So we sent letters to Ames, Gilbert, and Kelly as well as owners within a quarter mile and we didn't hear anything back from the cities. Notices were also published in the paper. Both of those were on June 28th. Staff did receive one comment in support of the rezoning request directly from the property owner to the west of the subject property. That same individual, along with 11 other property owners and a commercial business, signed a document in support of the rezoning request and most are within close proximity to the subject property. So at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, three individuals provided comments and that was on July 11th. The first was Justin Dodge, the subject property owner's representative. He advocated for approval of the rezoning and stated Mr. Finch wanted to continue operation of the business on the subject property until retirement, which is expected around 2030. Next was Mrs. Northrup, neighbor to the east. She advocated for denial of the rezoning request and approval of the home business permit renewal with conditions. She stated Mr. Finch is generally a good neighbor, but the piles of wood have grown substantially and are visible during the winter.
Now, there's also a letter of support from, from the Norths, right?
From the Northrups?
Yeah.
She, if she signed...
Signed by Thomas, I just noticed the name.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then finally, Ethan Anderson, the Story County Attorney advocated for denial of the rezoning request and approval of the home business permit with conditions. And then also informed the Planning and Zoning Commission of another alternative, which is the waiver by the Board of Supervisors, Chapter 92.04.
That brings us to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was to deny the rezoning and support the home business permit renewal with conditions. Items that staff noted are that it's a rezoning that would likely benefit the applicant making it a spot zoning. Changing the zoning district would create an area that would allow for future incompatible, incompatible land uses. New commercial industrial uses should be encouraged to locate inside incorporated areas or appropriately zoned. Again, this comes from the comp plan. Clustering of uses are to be prioritized to limit infrastructure costs and negative impact from incompatible uses. Precedent may be set causing substantial and unnecessary shift in the direction of the, of the comp plan if this is approved. And then, of course, other home businesses that aren't in compliance, you know, may take note and have interest in rezoning their property as well. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote 6-0 in denial of the rezoning and the comp plan map amendment. They did vote 4-2 to support the home business permit with conditions. And this is a copy of a home business permit. In this particular case, it would be for the applicant on this property for the duration of the operation of the business. The conditions are in red. The first condition talks about being allowed to bring in logs, the branches through this year. And then as far as the existing materials to be sold until they're gone, to be allowed to continue use of the two buildings and the number of staff, which are between four and six. And again, use of two buildings. That brings us to a alternative of number three, which is to deny the zoning map amendment, which is ordinance 273. And the C-2C map amendment is Resolution 18-02 in support of the home business permit renewal with the conditions. So really, there's two actions. One involves the rezoning, the zoning map and the comp plan map, and then the home business permit with conditions.
Okay, yeah, we'll get to public hearing in just a minute. So seems to be, you're, good job on the presentation, both Jerry and Ryan, seems to be there's four items that we're trying to unpack, right? You've got the rezoning, which I think is pretty clear where we are in rezoning and how that should be utilized if you're talking about a spot rezoning. You're talking about this home business permit for an existing business, one that's existed, known to Story County since at least 2000, even though the first home business permit doesn't come in until 2010. But we were out there doing some site review clearly in 2000. So there's at least enough confusion of what's going on there. You've got a business that Story County knows directly is a good performing business because they've cleared digits for us. They supply the wood to Dakens Lake and Hickory Grove for campfires. I mean, this is not, this is not a business that's just shown up overnight. I see letters from basically all the surrounding property owners in support, they were in support of the rezoning, but the way I took that is support of the business operations, support that this is a good neighbor that we're talking about. And then the final one, and Ryan, you hit on this and it's what I've been thinking all the way through. So it seems to me that when a tree service, any tree service goes in and takes out trees, they really have two, three options with the trees, right? They can leave them where they fall and it becomes the property owner's responsibility to figure out what to do with them. They can dispose of them in a landfill, some kind of dump site. Or they can recycle the material to be reused and it's always intrigued me and been real positive in my mind that we've got a tree service here that's trying to recycle all this material that's coming basically out of Story County and be utilized in Story County. So that's two. The third possibility that we haven't talked a lot about and maybe we won't need to talk about it depending on how everything else goes, is as I understand it, Board of Supervisors always has the option of granting a waiver to any business that we want to grant a waiver to. And, and I don't think that was really discussed very much at Planning and Zoning Commission. And then the final thing, and it's not for today, it's just kind of where I've gotten to going through all this, is that we really need to dig in and review our home business permit and, and figure out the strengths and weaknesses, inconsistencies in there, the whole thing. And, and so I hope that coming out of this meeting, Jerry, that's something that we're going to work into the, the work plan for planning and development to really start to analyze that.
There's nothing about transition. We have these requirements, but at some point, if you're a growing business, you're probably going to be non-compliant with these.
We hope, we hope you're growing to the point that you're going to stop being compliant and we've got to figure out a way to transition all this. So am I seeing, and let's just take the three, because the fourth one is for tomorrow, right? The dealing with the, the whole home business permit is for tomorrow and later. But am I seeing the three possibilities that we have accurately?
You went, you mentioned waiver. I mean, the waiver's got to come, you need a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to use that as an option.
Okay, so it would have to go back to planning and zoning?
Go back to the Planning and Zoning.
And it really wasn't given Planning and Zoning Commission as even an option in this, even though it is an option?
It was brought up at the meeting as an option.
By the county attorney's office.
Yeah, okay. Marty, question, so we're going, we're going to do two things. We're going to get questions from Marty, then I'd like to hear from Ethan Anderson, who is our civil attorney. Then we'll open the public hearing, then we'll try to figure out where we are.
I guess conceptually, a one-year renewal or review on these things does seem like a little tight for your office. And I think one of the, as you put, work projects before your office, I would think this is one of those, moving from one-dimensional to the transition because clearly with business success, people may start here and then grow out of it. And we need to be able to say, we're with you to begin, but we want to push you in a proper setting that I think would serve the county and not just the business. So that, that conceptually will come later. I guess, as I have to say that I use and have a friend that is in the tree service in Story County, and I have a pile of wood on my property and I'm glad that nothing has cropped up in the way because I do burn wood, but I have knowledge of the industry that's having helped this guy out a couple of times, that sizing and selling, reselling the wood product is part and parcel of business. I don't think you can separate the two. There's no severance in my mind because on a financial component, I suspect if you can't do one, you probably can't do the other. So, and, and knowing that, you know, as you found the two that exist in Ames, we know that there's others out there and I guess we will attend to that on a going-forward basis at some point. So I did have the opportunity to go to the Planning and Zoning meeting. They were truly conflicted. They moved this around. I thought Ethan did a good job scanning up. I look forward to the public hearing in behalf of anybody that'd like to speak to it. And at this point, I think that we need to find a way forward because we have known about this business. This business is a success in Story County. We, as a county, use it and there are others in the county that I believe rely on it. So I'm looking to where we can shape this in a way that everybody is served.
Absolutely. Any comments before we ring Ethan up?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you guys. Ethan, please come on up.
Morning, Ethan.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Ethan.
So Ethan Anderson, Story County Attorney's Office Assistant, Story County Attorney. I think the challenge before the board here is coming up with the solution that works for the county and for the applicant. Jerry mentioned it briefly in his presentation, but we met with Justin Dodge and Todd Finch two or three months ago. And I want to point that out, that once we sent Todd the friendly reminder letter, they came to meet with us.
Absolutely.
So they, they've been engaged in this process as they were in 2010 when he did the initial home business permit. He went from out of compliance to compliance within 23 days. Todd Finch, Justin Dodge, they're engaged with the county, wanting to work with us, wanting to come to a solution that provides them certainty. Now, the certainty they need is he needs to be able to continue his business through the life of business without worrying about, and I don't want to go into the background of the issue, but the county position with regards to his business presents this as a unique situation. These are unique circumstances that we find ourselves in. But what I think Jerry has done and was presented, the Planning and Zoning Commission, has identified a narrowly tailored solution that fits, and that's his home business renewal with conditions. It fits legally because our enforcement mechanism for the county is voluntary compliance through court action if necessary, but that allows a schedule of compliance. So it's compliance schedule. Now, I'll concede that it is a bit unusual when I was in the Planning and Zoning Commission to argue for a 12-year, 10-year compliance. But I think what makes it acceptable and legally recommendable is that this would be tied to Todd's use only. This isn't grandfather for some other business entity or some other success, business successor to continue. This is narrowly tailored for Todd only to continue until Todd retires. I think 10 years would be appropriate for that. I mean, 2028, as Jerry's pointed out, there's the ability to collect all the additional wood material, which would generate another several years of sales. I think that condition is the best way for us to meet this challenge and provide a solution that works for Jerry, that meets the legal, passes the legal muster, and provides certainty to the applicant. And I would recommend that the board deny the rezoning, but approve the home business permit with conditions. And that condition not be 2018, but be 2028 or 2030, some of those regards.
Okay. Good questions for Ethan?
Knowing that he just reflected on what he had said, took into account the conversations he's had subsequent, making recommendations today, look forward to the public hearing, we'll go after that.
Hey, I've got, I've got one other and you can't, I don't believe you can answer this off the top of your head, but it's something that's been rattling around in my head. this off the top of your head, but it's something that's been rattling around in my head, and it actually has to do with DuPont and the Stover bales. But we've established, I think, pretty solidly, that the Stover bales are in fact ag product. Even if they don't come from the site where they're being stored, the fact that they're coming off, I believe it might be reasonable to make a case that wood harvested in Story County and stored on an A1 site is also an ag product. Does that intrigue you at all, that thought?
Those are discussions we had in that initial meeting several months ago, when we were brainstorming alternatives for compliance. And we felt that under our Story County court ordinances, the material has to be harvested on-site, is that the correct, does that say, Jerry? The material has to be harvested on-site. So our ordinances, and this will be addressed maybe when we do the home business, but our ordinances contemplate that the material harvested on-site can be processed on-site.
Right.
But as you can see, the property, this is a 10-acre property. There is more wood than could ever be grown on a 10-acre piece of property.
Hundred percent. And so the only pushback I have there is we have all these Stover bales, you know, 750,000 bales of Stover that are stored around the county, and much of the Stover that's stored in any particular site was not harvested on-site, yet we still deem that it is all clearly ag product, and the county has no ability to regulate its processing or storage. And I'm not looking to get into a debate today. I just think it's an interesting question that I could sure see either side of it.
Oh, I agree, I agree. I mean, we, we had a, I think it would be fair to say a robust debate over whether or not egg exemption applied in this situation. And we did look into that, and I think if the board directs us so, we'll look into that further. I think that could be for another day.
Yeah, and I don't know that it's necessary to look into it. It was just one of those things that, that came up to me, that I know if I was the landowner, I would have real interest in saying, hang on just a second, this is an ag product. So anything else for Ethan?
No.
Or Jerry?
Let's do the hearing.
All right. So at this point, we're going to open the public hearing. We're going to ask anybody who would like to, to address the items before the board of supervisors. I would ask that Justin Dodge come up and visit with us, because I know I've got a couple questions for Justin as the, as the representative of Finco in this matter. So my first, my first question, and maybe my only question, depending on where we are here, can you tell me generally what percentage of the business is the recycling and sell of the recycled material or use of the recycled material?
So Justin Dodge, Hunziker Companies, 105 South 16th Street in Ames, and I am the representative of the applicant, Finco Tree Service. So to answer your question, Rick, one-third of the revenue of the business comes from the resale of the wood products that are sold.
One-third of the total?
Of the total revenue of the whole business. So it's a significant portion.
So if we were to shut that down at the end of 2018, or shut down the ability for that to, so allow the processing after 2018, but not allow any new material to come in, so now a decision would have to be made on any new wood that's taken, is that going to a landfill or what's happening with it? And that's a third of the business?
Correct.
Okay.
A third of the business that, like I said, also helps decrease the expenses of the tree clearing business itself. So if all of a sudden Todd had to transition and to start hauling all the material to Boone landfill, he would have additional expenses as well as contributing to the landfill.
Other thoughts that you have for us?
Yep, just a couple that I want to make sure that you guys are aware of and everybody else in the community is aware of. We're very appreciative of Jerry and Ethan for taking all the time that, that both of them have spent with us in several meetings, emails, phone conversations, and helping work through this problem. Todd, as far as he is concerned, has always viewed that, you know, when the county came to him and said, hey, we've got an issue, we've got something, he's jumped through those hoops right away.
Right.
And so that goes back all the way to 2000, when Todd moved his business from just a mile south of this location up to this location, when Natalie, who's Jerry's predecessor twice over.
Code enforcement.
Actually went out with Todd and helped lay out the whole 10 acres and said, okay, the business, you know, offices need to be here, the house needs to be here, the septic system needs to be here, and helped lay all those things out. So even in 2000, Story County was fully aware of Finco Tree Service and, and helped him plot out that, that whole site. Fast forward to 2010 with Sheena, and that was October, as you guys noted, that, you know, they said he was out of compliance with Story County ordinances, and so within 23 days, Todd had jumped through all those hoops. And even at that point in time, when it said, you know, a home business permit only allows for one employee plus the resident, well, Todd clearly stated on that application, he had three employees plus the one building, and Sheena said at that point in time, I want you, well, this is when Todd had asked to construct the pole building, they asked him to build a second building to holler the trucks and the tree clearing equipment. So he was out of compliance by having three employees in 2010, and they had actually asked him to construct the second building, which also put him out of compliance for the home business permit. But like I said, he's out, he has the support of his neighbors, he has not had a complaint in 18 years on the site. Clearly, his neighbors are supportive. If you look from the pictures that you guys saw, and I actually had brought some photos to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I had to zoom in on my camera to even see the sheds, and even then, I couldn't see any trucks, couldn't see any wood piles. Todd has done an excellent job of screening and trying to protect all of his neighbors from his business and to make sure that he's compatible. I got to have one little jab on you, Jerry. I laughed at the comments about the erosion control, because I'm a stormwater inspector for Hunziker Companies, and that's not erosion control, that was after a 10 to 11 inches of rain, and in compliance with every farm field I've ever seen my whole life, that, I'm sorry, after you get a bunch of rain, you're going to have some ruts. And so not so much erosion controls on an established site, nor were we, nor was Todd proposing any landscaping or additional buffering, because as you guys saw from the photos, he's got a tremendous amount of buffering and a tremendous amount of landscaping. So in closing, we met with Jerry and we met with Ethan, and out of all the different options, the rezoning was the one vehicle at that, at that meeting that we felt as though Todd could continue to operate his business on-site, and so that was the avenue that we wanted to move forward with. It seems as though there's now some exemptions and things like that to the home business permit that might be more appropriate use or vehicle at this point in time. So support anything that allows Todd to continue to operate this business on-site. And I would encourage you guys to review the home business permit and the criteria, because we want to encourage businesses that are responsible, that are responsive to the county, that do their best to stay within our ordinances, like Finco, and not only, you know, encourage them, but allow them to stay in Story County rather than pushing them out, so.
You were at the meeting as well there at P&amp;D, as you spoke, but one of the things that the commission was most conflicted on was the dates as far as an extension. I mean, it went from 2018 to 2025. Do you have any suggestions in that sense?
At this point in time, I, Todd is very supportive of the 10 to 12-year exemption. My personal hope is that we can amend the home business permit criteria, and that way businesses just like Finco can continue to operate and be successful in the county and continue to pay taxes and support.
So you would say, I guess, at 10 years, that would be 2028 or 2030?
Either one of those would be very acceptable for the applicant. Like I said, my, my hope is we can amend that home business permit and make sure that good neighbors can be in compliance with our ordinances.
Other questions? So I guess this is a business with conditions that one of the ones, my expectation is the fact that Todd has started the business, Todd will end the business. Todd will have the ability to sell the business, but I don't think necessarily on a going forward basis, anybody else, at least to my belief, would be somebody that would, I would think this would be, at the point of sale, when Todd says, I called it a day, I have a buyer, it moves on. And I think that's a reasonable expectation.
Yeah, so, so the home business permit that's presented to us to consider says this is dealing with Todd Finch and his ownership of Finco and is nontransferable.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Justin, thank you. We're in public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board of supervisors on this matter?
Yeah, I'd like to talk to you.
Absolutely. Have a seat.
Morning. My name's Larry Werner. I live in North Side of Ames. I've been friends with Todd Finch since 1983, when I moved to Iowa. So I've known him for a long time, when he was like 18 years old. He's had this business going since about that time in one state or another. I think you're screwing with him. That's my personal opinion. I had that conversation with you, Rick.
Yep.
I think there ought to be a solution.
Uh-huh.
I don't know what the solution is, but, you know, he jumps through all these hoops to do what he's got to do, and then, oh, a couple of years later, somebody new gets hired, we're going to screw with him again on some other instance. He's employed three of my sons, one of them's currently employed by his business.
Uh-huh.
He generates a tremendous amount of, of revenue and benefit to this county by, like you said, clearing ditches, everything from clearing ditches to providing firewood for the, for the parks. Different businesses, restaurants and stuff rely on him for that firewood. And, you know, at one point in time, they said, well, it all has to be, you're going to have a home business, it all has to be undercover. Well, what are they going to do? Put up a balloon like they had out at the ABC to cover up the whole property? I mean, to shed all that wood, there's no possible way you could afford to put up enough building to do that. As far as the building thing went, you know, back in 2000, they talked about these buildings need to be, you know, one building, you got to, okay, you got to get a building permit. He got the building permit. We talked about, actually, I'm in the construction industry, so I know a little bit about buildings. Talked about tying the buildings together to meet this compliance of one building, you know, and it just wasn't really feasible at that time. It's impossible? Yeah, it's possible, and then you could go into that. I'm just saying, you're messing with somebody that's successful in this county, that's generating revenue for, for taxes, for the, this local option sales taxes, and you're, I mean, he pays property taxes, he pays payroll taxes, and all these people vote. There's an election coming up in November.
Yeah.
We all vote.
And you all should vote, and that's the least of these concerns?
Well, I.
But I do like the idea of, let's get to the end of this.
Well, let's get to the end of it, let's give the man some peace. You know, I've been friends with him, and he's used me as a sounding board. We've had a lot of discussions over this whole, and this has aggravated the hell out of him for a long time. Quit aggravating the man, let him worry about running a business rather than worrying about the county up his ass.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody else, I'll close the public hearing. We'll turn to the board for action. It seems to me, Marty, that we've got three, so I understand that, Jerry, you've given us kind of an all in one fell swoop, but I think there's three separate actions here. And Ethan Jessica, if you want to head me off on this, I think we need to deal with the proposed ordinance, I think we need to deal with the resolution 1902, and then I think we need to deal with the home business permit, because I don't think it all fits in a nice little paragraph form that we get all three done.
I agree.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So let's deal with ordinance 273 first, which is re, potential rezoning of this. We have a pretty clear, we've got a 6-0 vote from Planning and Zoning Commission, we got a recommendation from staff not to rezone, we got a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission, 6-0 not to rezone, we got a recommendation from our civil attorney not to rezone. I know I'm against spot rezoning unless that's the only option you've got ahead of you. I don't think it's our only option here. Marty, what's your pleasure on ordinance 273?
I move, you know, this is pretty straightforward if you dig in, and to watch it move through the county processes, I'm trying to find mine, I have no desire, I would move, denial of ordinance 273.
And I'll second. Further discussion on the vote to deny 273 rezoning the property. G, and Sanders, aye, so that's 2-0 to deny 273. Sheldon, do we have a second reading on that even though we denied it? Okay. So that takes care of 273. Now we're to resolution 1902, which as I understand it, we would, needed to do to amend the C2C if we had. So this is another vote, deny, or is it moot?
I would suggest doing it anyway.
Okay.
Well, then I would move to deny resolution 19-02 from our C2C future land use map amendment as presented.
Yeah, and I'll second, reason being, there's no reason to amend the C2C if we're not rezoning the property. Further discussion?
None.
G, Sanders, aye, resolution 1902 is denied. Now that brings us to the home business permit, which I find generally favorable, Jerry. I so appreciate you and Ryan digging in. I've got one issue with it, and that is the stopping Finco from bringing any more lumber on property at the end of this calendar year.
Right. I just want to add, you know, the intent was never to shut down any part of, of the business operation. I think the thought was that perhaps maybe you could find a location that's zoned for that use.
Yeah, and so what I'm suggesting is, so we talked about, I saw the date 2030 in your presentation at one point, and so I'm suggesting that we just amend the 2018 that's recommended here to 2030. Is there a reason that the board can't do that as we consider this?
No.
Okay. Marty, if you're comfortable with that, then, then let's have a motion along those lines.
Can I add too, Rick, that part of this process is going to involve us preparing that home business permit. We'll record that, and, and so with your action, with the board's action, that'll make it solid, and it'll stand with this business, with that property for this purpose.
For this purpose, and this, as long as Finco continues to operate as it currently operates, we leave them alone.
So there's two conditions to this home business permit? As I understand it, as we're talking here?
Yeah, I've got four conditions. I'll read them. Allow the applicant to bring tree trunks and tree branches on-site to be processed through 2030. Beyond this date, no additional tree processing may occur on-site. Advocate may continue selling existing stockpiles of processed trees until depleted, which would mean it could go past 2030. Existing number of employees, four to six, may continue to report on-site, and the two existing accessory buildings may continue to be used for the business.
I would move that we consider the home business permit with the four conditions as listed.
All right, and I'm just going to, I'm going to second, but I'm also underscoring that that's at 2030.
At 2030.
For trees coming on-site. Okay? Further discussion?
None.
Jerry, anything to add before we vote?
Nothing else. Ryan, is there anything else? Nothing else, thank you.
Good. Ethan, anything?
No, I think Jerry's recommendation to get this recorded would give the applicant some assurance of future activity he can be permitted to do.
This will allow him to continue to operate as he's currently operating through 2030. Whether we change our home business permit, whatever happens, this allows them to continue through 2030, and shouldn't have to worry about anybody from the county messing with them between now and then, as long as they keep operating like they're operating.
That's correct. With, remember, public alluded to a change in administration or a change in people sitting at this table, that wouldn't change. This would be 2030.
Still have this. Todd or Justin, do you want to add anything before we vote on this? Hopefully, it gets us where we need to go. Okay? G, Sanders, aye, home business permit with the four conditions is adopted. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. All right, let's see. Additional items, consideration of increasing the hourly wage for election technicians and temporary office workers. Lucy Martin, it's getting harder and harder to attract people to work our elections, isn't it?
Well, you're just gonna do this for me, and I won't have to tell you.
I just, that, I'm the, I'm the hype man, right?
There we go.
Set the timer.
Yes. Good morning. I have with me Kevin Norris, the Deputy of Elections with the Auditor's Office, and Kevin is the one who actually hires, trains, and daily assigns work to our temps and tax. Just, just a little overview, I did give you a memo that outlines seven of the main duties for our temporary workers. The first four on that list, those are not daily tasks, those are sort of when they are scheduled, just so you understand the sort of erratic nature of what the, what these workers do. And then the last three, those are daily activities, but those are only available for the month of October. So, we're, the new legislation, which changed a lot of things in election law, also took thirty days off of our administrative process, so we're actually functioning in a much shorter timeframe than we used to. We assume that we'll have probably the amount of work, just gonna put the thumb on the hose there, but the hours that we can say people will work are, it's a much shorter timeframe. So, we have, in the past, tried a variety of methods of hiring temporary workers. Word of mouth is honestly our best method. What's built into the budget if we can't hire is to go through a third party, in which case, we're gonna pay five dollars on top of what our current hourly wage is anyway, so we put the fifteen, fifteen fifty for that, for that time period. So, and we don't distinguish between, like, whether you work at a computer or whether you work in the back room. Years ago, there was such a distinction in that even a fifty cent per hour wage difference caused some strife internally for us. But also, the, the, I guess the signees between them has really blurred. Everybody works to put together the daily absentee to go out. Oftentimes, we would pull, depending on what we have during the day, what, we might pull from data entry to do public test. A lot of our primaries end up working as poll workers or, or backing the precincts on Election Day. So, you know, making a distinction on paper doesn't actually translate into what we ask them to do in reality.
All right, so let me, let me see if I'm getting this.
Sure.
Market is telling us, just supply and demand, that at ten fifty an hour, we're having trouble drawing people to do the job.
Right. Plus, that's driving to Nevada and back, 'cause we're mostly competing for, in like Ames job market, like stocking shelves at Target or Walmart, something like that.
So, that's the first thing. Market's telling us that we're not paying enough. Second thing is, overall, with the change in Iowa election laws, we can make this increase in what we pay hourly without a real dramatic impact to our bottom line, what we budgeted in the past, ten fifty an hour for more hours, now we're talking about fifteen dollars an hour for fewer hours, simply because that's the way the state has handed it to us.
Plus, we, we, we built into the budget the contingency if we have to go to a third party to hire, so, yeah.
And I'd always rather not go through a third party if possible, I'd rather the, the employees be more responsible to us than anybody else, and, uh, I-
I will say that Kevin has had to let people go after a big election. I mean, we only, we only hire for data entry purposes for a big election, for a general election, so every two years. For other elections, we always hire the, the public tests and the packing of equipment, the delivery, the support on Election Day. But only for primaries and generals does the county bear that cost, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, to get, to get decent people that we don't have to fire halfway through and then rely on, I'm looking at Shelley, 'cause she's to do overtime. Also, um-
Shelley, is that why you get surly near Election Day every year?
Frankly for me, Kevin's time is so valuable, if I can, if he has peace of mind with a decent temporary staff, then I have more access to his brilliance for my own purposes as opposed to, um-
And honestly, in the current environment that we're, that we're in right now, these jobs are a lot more technical than they have been in the past, too. We have, you know, the, the people that do the, the voting equipment and that do, I mean, they have to be, they have to be technically proficient at what they do. And if we could, you know, satisfy and keep the folks that we've had for years, inspire them to stay, that would be very beneficial to the county.
And inspire them to sell their recently retired friends to join their force.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so, we do have, yes, additional security protocols to go with everything else, which, you know, we are, we are very capable of handling, but if we, initial trust is easier to, or initial, we're looking for quality over quantity, and we're not looking for warm bodies.
Do we make any direct pitches to our retirement communities?
Yep.
We do? Okay.
Actually, retired, recently retired county employees is a great pool to pull from, recently retired teachers, another one that we talked to, and recently retired law enforcement. These are all the best sources that I've found.
Good. Outstanding. No brainer to me, Marty.
Absolutely. Legislature charted the timeframe when this will take place, so the extra dollars that will wash. You see this with schools, have the same conversation on upping stuff to teacher pay, 'cause you wanna get people that you can count on, and I don't envy your jobs when it turns to an election, because, you know, having, I often tie my tie in China, covered that has my forepins from having worked elections in this county, and the backstory of what it takes on the run-up, the conduct, and the takedown of an election is substantial, and I don't envy what you do, but I thank you for what you do. So, I would move that we approve. Consideration of the increase in the honorable wage for election technicians and temporary workers as proposed from the Auditor's Office.
Yeah, so we're taking it from ten fifty an hour to fifteen dollars an hour, and I second it. Further discussion?
None.
Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye, pass this thing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is discussion, consideration of the 28E agreement for the Headwaters and South Skunk River Watershed Management Authority, the artist formerly known as the Kegley Branch.
Good morning, Leanne.
Yeah, this, this is definitely mouthful. What is before you is, as Rick said, the follow-up to the Kegley Branch Watershed Management Authority that was discussed about a year ago. In a couple of months, you'll be seeing, within the next few weeks actually, a resolution nullifying your action to form the Kegley Branch Watershed, just some cleanup. You and Steve Ames both acted positively to start the formation of that Watershed Management Authority. As we delved in deeper to it, we realized, maybe it should be larger than that, and hence the South Skunk River Watershed, or Headwaters of the South Skunk River Watershed Management Authority was formed, or was born. There are seventeen possible signed parties who may potentially sign on. Right now, I think we're looking at eight to ten entities. I know we've had a couple for sure that have indicated it. We're asking entities by the end of this month, so that I can then shortly after the beginning of the month file with the Secretary of State the 28E agreement. Rick, just for your pers, and Shelley, if the Board does act positively on this today, ultimately, we might need seventeen copies of the signature page, just in case we have also seventeen due sign-on. So, we'll work with you on that.
I'm loose, I'm ready to go.
Wait, we don't have seventeen copies today.
No questions?
None.
It, it, I mean, Squaw has, has performed way beyond our wildest expectations. I, I hope and believe that this one will as well, it's the next, next logical step for us, and so I hope we're sporting.
So, we're kinda looking at the Kegley 2.0 type.
This is Kegley, it just extended further north, now that I get it, so.
No, I would compliment, I catch myself over in that game, we got our new signings out there, they're aggressive, and I'm glad to see. So, I would move that we consider the 28E agreement for the Headwaters of the South Skunk River Watershed Management Authority as presented by Leanne.
And I second. Leanne, anything else for us?
Thank you.
Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye, adopted. And now we'll look for other entities to join us, and I'll get busy signing up the seventeen of these.
I'll get copies for you.
All right, next item, still Leanne, discussion and direction regarding amendments to the Urban Renewal Plan.
So, this is to follow through last week's production from the Board, this is regarding the Tedesco Environmental Learning Quarter, Phase Three, the Urban Renewal Plan draft changes were put on today's agenda. It's actually pretty simple, but I do want to explain one change. It's just actually adding Phase Three is the majority of the change, or the, the premise of the change, but on Page Seven of the draft plan, there's two new columns added for a number of turbines. When the code of ordinances was adopted, this was added to the table in that chapter on Urban Renewal, so I thought it was logical to add it in here as well.
Good.
And then, on the Page Eight, the added properties are added in October 2016. By the time we added them, we only had the base parcel numbers.
Okay.
When the code of ordinances was re-adopted, we knew what the parcels on leased land, buildings on leased land, what those parcel numbers were, so to be consistent, I would recommend adding those as well. So, action today is just saying, yes, these are the changes that look good to send out to our taxing entities, set up the consultation meeting, letting me know if there's anything else you want me to add to these proposed changes. Then, followed from today, I would set the consultation meeting and send out the notices to the, to those taxing entities. Following what we've done in the past, when new properties are added, so new turbines, new commercial properties, it's sent to all taxing entities, authorities. What we've done in the past, when it's just new projects added, such as this in Phase Two and Three with Tedesco, we've just sent it to those taxing entities associated with that project. So, in that case, that would just be the Ames School District, DMAC, City of Ames, and Washington Township are those four taxing authorities that would receive invitation and notice in the consultation meeting.
Good.
Any questions?
And so, when was the first wind tower built, and start again? Yeah, we had this conversation, we had two different dates in our heads, which one was it?
I think, when I, we had just moved downstairs, I think it was like 2006.
All right.
It was like, 2006 is when I, or 2008 is, I think, when we got the-
So, I just did the math, and I said, "We started this in 2012, and we hit it before", so for five years, there was no taxable value, so, so the increment hadn't rolled up, and so I had subtracted five from 2012 and had 2007.
Yeah, I think it's, well, between 2006 and 2008, I think it is right in that period.
We have been hearing conversations on the build-out of larger turbines and larger turbine blades. Would that change the valuation of these structures?
Good. Just an assessor question.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that on a consideration basis, as we see them coming back on a refresh technology-wise, they are clearly gonna increase capacity with that change of valuation.
I can check with the county assessor, but I believe, based on the ordinance, they're locked into the initial base valuation for seven years.
That would be fine. So.
Seven years?
That's right.
If I can follow up on that, you know?
I think it's a percentage, percentage of the valuation, it doesn't mean the valuation can't change, it's just the thirty-five percent.
Yeah, that's right. So, you could be right.
Yeah, so, all right, so basically putting in Phase Three of Tedesco, making a couple other, um-
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping kind of suggestions. Any questions, or is there a motion?
I would move direction.
Direct.
Oh, sorry.
Direction.
All right.
Okay. You know, I'm comfortable with what we have had presented to us today, and-
And I'm comfortable as well, there's your direction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That approved, I'm writing directed for you there, Sheldon.
Well, thanks for the catch.
All right. Next item is departmental reports, community services quarterly report. Good morning. Carla Webb. Hi, Carla.
How are you today?
Good.
Good to see you.
Good, too.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Great meeting. So, today, my quarterly report covers from April to June 2018, for general assistance for single household cases assisted, we had twenty-four, twenty-three families that we assisted, for a total of forty-seven for the quarter. And we have year-to-date totals, there are seventy-three single individuals and eighty-one families assisted, for a total of one hundred and fifty-four. For denials, we had two hundred and seventy for the quarter, year-to-date is nine hundred and eighty-seven. Individuals that applied but did not return, we had seventeen for the quarter and forty year-to-date. Types of assistance provided for rent, we expended fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Utilities, one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars, thirty-five cents in miscellaneous items such as medications, transportation, and burial, the bulk of that being burial, eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. For rescue mobile home park relocation assistance, we paid on five claims in the quarter and expended two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, seventy-five cents. Year-to-date-
Are we, are we closed out of this now?
Yeah, closed out, yep, yep, so that everything was finalized. On the Board, that closed the program effective June fifteenth.
Good.
We did our outreach to folks via phone call, emails, letters.
Do you have a final dollar on what we expanded?
She's gonna tell you in about ten seconds.
For, for FY18, we expended twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, thirty-five cents.
You are good. You're better.
Yeah, that's a little, that's not even close.
For SSI interim, we don't currently have anyone that were assisting through that program, but we did receive some revenue this quarter of one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. We had an individual that was approved for benefits, and we were therefore reimbursed for him, for so many costs that we expended for him. Substance abuse services, we paid on five claims, seventeen claims year-to-date for that. In regards to CICS, we went through a revision of our management plan, policies and procedures, and submitted those through the channels that we need to go through, and those were just recently approved by DHS. The primary change to the management plan involved adding Green County into the CICS region as of July first. We wrapped up FY19 contracting with a total of fifty-six contracts developed. We worked through a request for proposal process with, for transitional living centers in Marshall, in Marshall County, Center Associates was awarded that TLC contract. We were also looking at TLC development in Boone County, that has been discontinued at this point in time. The provider that we were working with there was struggling to find a rental property, so they were having challenges that way, as well as with the new legislation in House File 2456, we felt we're gonna need to focus on some other key areas right now. Mobile crisis response team services were rolled out to Story County, Boone, and Marshall Counties on May 29, and then those services also started in the rest of the region, in Franklin, Hamilton, Hardin County on June 18. So, now this service is fully accessible throughout our region. When I wrote this report last week, total number of calls that the team has responded to was a hundred and fourteen calls region-wide. Of those calls, twenty-two were for children and ninety-two were for adults, and thirteen individuals were taken to the hospital. So, it is diverting individuals from, from needing to go to the hospital. I don't have a specific breakout of number of calls specific to Story County. I anticipate as we go along here, we'll be getting those individualized numbers. Progress Industries provided notice that they would be closing their Ames office for Supported Employment Services effective June 30. I reached out to OptiMe Live Services and Genesis Development, and they both agreed to expand their existing Supported Employment Services in Story County. As of June 29, sixty-seven individuals had been referred on to other agencies for service. Twelve individuals had been discharged from Progress Industries, and two were in the process of being referred yet, and two, Progress Industries was working, trying to work with their individuals' case managers to get referrals done. Something that CICS has done in the past quarter was enter into an independent contract agreement with Karen Walters-Crammond for three months to consult on MHDs planning and implementation with a couple of key focus areas, including how to implement value-based contracting, and what does rated funding look like. And I believe Marty is, as his role on the governing board, also participating in some of those committee meetings. committee meetings.
We just had a very good meeting last week, and I say she is worth what we are contracting her for to do. I think we have some takeaways.
Good.
For, on the community services side of things, we spoke about Crespi Mobile Home Park and that assistance ending. For the quarter, areas, kinds of assistance we paid on were for rent, utility, hotel, and storage unit rentals. We continue to have staff involved with the OBOE Task Force, and also we have staff participating now in the substance use task force that was developed by the City of Nevada. That task force in Nevada, I believe, we're working on pulling together resource guides that the city plans to share with all of the citizens in Nevada, and then also having a conversation with the OBOE Task Force Group on holding it in town hall, sort of meeting later in the year possibly.
Very cool in Nevada, and almost yeah.
Yeah, yep, very great. We continue to be involved in the Two Rivers Regional Committee regarding coordinated entry for shelter care. And we also have staff with our office meeting with local agencies exploring a coordinated intake process for homeless prevention services. We're going to be having a lunch and learn on September 19th, where we're going to be inviting multiple agencies that currently provide rent and utility assistance to come together, and we're going to talk about what this could potentially look like for coordinated entry. For the quarter, Erin Bree words interviewed 110 individuals, veterans or surviving spouses in her role as a CDSO. And then we had staff members that were able to participate in C3 de-escalation training that was provided by the region. Something I didn't mention in here too is we have staff participating on a committee that's organizing a mental health expo that'll take place on September 25th at 6 o'clock at ISU Memorial Union Great Hall, and we have Joan Becker coming to present.
Wow. You guys have been busy, Carla.
Thank you. They are busy.
Absolutely.
Yes, staff are doing a great job.
Doing really good, doing a lot, doing it well. I just, you know, one thing that jumps out at me is the fact that we had, did not have crisis response teams, and the minute you turn the switch, look how much they get used.
Absolutely. It's going to be fascinating to watch this grow and hopefully have the impact that we hope it's going to have.
Good job.
Carla, thanks, great job.
Thank you.
Hey Marty, how about if we talk about health impact assessments now?
Be a good time.
All right. Leanne, let's talk about those.
Welcome back, Leanne.
Just as long as we're here, Leanne, let's talk about health impact assessments.
If you've got time before lunch.
Okay, yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Switching gears, tangentially, talking about something that's kind of a new concept, but not so new necessarily to Story County. This is a discussion, and I have just 20 some slides about health impact assessments and 30,000 view overview, and just spend some time why we're here, and then wrap up with the next steps. Quite simply, the aim of health impact assessments is to make that the nexus between decisions that are impacting public health, our public decisions such as land use decisions, policy decisions, looking at how that affects our public health and that network as well. Why we're here though, is an output of the C2C Plan, Cornerstone to Capstone Plan. Under Housing Goal Number Three, is where the first mention of a health impact assessment is brought to light, and then it goes into the implementation matrix. And specifically under the Foundation Chapter, challenge to Story County to determine the viability of using health impact assessments. That's what this is all about today. It was added to my work program following the adoption of the implementation matrix and establishment of my work program. Stop me with any questions. Some of these I'm going to breeze through because you have, trying to read them before the meeting again today, as I said, is a high-level overview. I'm going to talk about what health impact assessments are, talk about the goals and how they relate to decision-making process. There are four basic types, I'll touch on quickly, the who, what, where, when, why, and how, what the process involves, and that goes back to four basic types. There's some other efforts underway, talk about what NACO is doing, next steps, and then the resources, so you can see where I pulled my research from, and then answering questions that you have at the end. Kind of relates to what I said earlier, but this is part of a toolkit that planners, decision-makers, policymakers can use to better inform community decisions about health implications of different development review policies, practices, whatever it may be. So you hear health impact assessment, environmental impact assessments have been around since late 60s, early 70s with the Clean Water Act. Actually, health impact assessments in some ways are a component of an EIS, Health Impact Assessment, EIS. You look at, you look at the impact to water, air quality through an EIS. So it's not a new concept, but it's something that started really emerging, emerging, can't talk today, in the planning profession in the past 10 years. Okay, I've really talked about this already, but it looks at all the different avenues of our development review actions or policymaking decisions from a scientific, health, and stakeholder standpoint to really weigh the cost and benefits of different proposals, keeping in mind the healthiest communities impacts and all those other endeavors that we're striving to accomplish. Going on, goals, how they relate in the decision-making process. I mentioned that you can identify the cost and benefits, what are those harms, and what are the positives that come before decisions made, rather than going in two years later and realizing, oh, we approved this 30-unit subdivision, but there are no sidewalks. Now, we're a rural jurisdiction, so that necessarily is not a good example, but that's what a lot of the more urban jurisdictions are struggling with, creating subdivisions and that are entirely loaded by cul-de-sacs. There's no connectivity, so the ability to have walkable neighborhoods does not exist. We all know what walkable neighborhoods and having that walkability factor does to increase health benefits for our populations across all specters.
But an applicable example of that could be, we would want to consider new housing developments, access to.
The trail network that's in Story County.
Exactly. So that really, this slide just, I know you're going to read this, you know I don't like to, but there are so many goals of having health impact assessments and how they fit into the public decision-making. Again, four basic types. Starts from the rapid, you know, it's going to be about two weeks to a couple months. It's just basically a cursory level health impact assessment. To a desktop, it's a little bit more enhanced rapid assessment. An intermediate, and then the comprehensive, and the comprehensive can take anywhere from a few months to more than a year to complete. And that's not what you would use if you're building that to development review process by any means. There'd be some sort of a checklist that would be tied to a rapid assessment that we would look at, but that's for future discussions. The who involves so many different partners. I think we have a good, good starting point here in Story County because we have a high level of collaboration among all these stakeholders and partners already, everywhere from the planning community to public health practitioners, to the business community, to maybe come active participants in the process, and that process is there later in the future defined by whichever type of assessment or combination thereof we seek to engage. The what, we look at, you know, the perspective of environment, social, and economic considerations, different proposals, and how they relate together. The when, I already talked about the four types, but that really does become a future direction for the board to consider, if we incorporate this, at what level do we start incorporating, do we begin incorporating health impact assessments? The where, it says this a couple times, it can be development review projects, it could be building a new building under Story County ownership. How that urban design of that building and layout of that building relates to the surrounding neighborhood, what kind of amenities are available to help support neighborhoods for healthy communities. Neighborhoods, regional, local level, whatever that may be. And then the why, again, to start that linkage between the decisions that are being made, making sure they're equitable, make sure they're distributed accordingly, and then combining them with the logical extension of whatever it may be for that development review process. And the goal is making sure we have healthy communities in the long run. And then the how, the how, the process is pretty straightforward. It's a simple planning process, but it is time-consuming depending on the level of settlement with which you seek. But it's, it's a similar process that whether you're strategic planning, whatever type of planning you're endeavoring, it has several steps. There are six of them. There are screening, scoping, assessment, looking at recommendations, reporting, and then the ongoing monitoring and evaluation. And again, those four types, each of those four types follows a similar planning process. So I just actually found a statement from the State of Health Impact Assessment and Planning. It's a guidebook that the American Planning Association put out in series of three different releases, the last one being culmination through a toolkit for planners to use to look at actually implementing health impact assessments. I will read this. "As the U.S. faces increasingly complex and interrelated chronic and infectious health conditions, health impact assessment is a tool to instigate interdisciplinary conversations leading to solutions that improve health." I think that's the underlying goal of any effort that health impact assessment is established and set out to accomplish. So what do we have already going underway? Actually quite a bit. In various ways, we already do kind of cursory health impact assessments when you look at our interdisciplinary review process with our interagency review team. And we've had that in place, well, since 1998 at least, 1999. We've looked at development proposals from a variety of different viewpoints, including environmental health, including transportation, including planning and development and assessment. So we're looking at it from a pretty comprehensive standpoint. Outside of Story County though, the Story County Quality of Life Alliance has been doing community health needs assessments for several years, but this will be the third one that they'll be undertaking in a couple of years.
You just like that acronym?
The Squal.
I'm really trying to get away from acronyms in my life in general. It's kind of nice not to have.
I know you like acronyms, Leanne.
The community health needs assessments are required by local health, public health departments in Iowa, and this is the means with which the, those assessments are undertaken. This would be the comprehensive health impact assessment, on steroids or maybe not, with a different viewpoint. So that, that's, we have two year, or two assessments already underway and, or finished, and then a third one underway here shortly. NACO's Healthiest Cities and Counties Challenge Toolkit is a new, relatively new release that's been put out. It's been developed to help cities and counties, primarily counties, but cities definitely has entities within, when they look at opportunities and challenges impacting collective health outcomes. So again, has opportunities to look at decision-making in regards to policies, and it is a nice toolkit available online, and my hyperlink works. Well, I know the item is there, because I just tested it, but it just lets you set up, walks you through different processes you can follow. It's not strictly a health impact assessment toolkit, but it has a variety of resources that counties really could find helpful. So the next steps, again, the challenge before the, for me to bring this back to you is to determine the viability using health impact assessments. If you ask me, is it viable? Yes, it is. We've already been doing a version of it, quasi-version over the past several years. Could we amp it up? Definitely. But for you, as a decision-making board, the discussion on the level of interest needs to occur. We've done the cursory review, now do we want to make decisions and address issues that could better be informed using health impact assessments? That's the first question. And then tied to that are the goals that can be set for, at times for using health impact assessments, and how would they be used? Is it through the development review process, or is it more high level of every larger policy you make, rather than just specific land use decisions? And then identifying who should be involved. So if you do agree that we should be looking at using health impact assessments, the direction staff may or may not be seeking today's under other reports, which is general, be careful, Shelley, but to continue, have it continue on my work program and bring forth to you further review and further delving into this. But with that, I do have my resources linked, what I used, and I have some other ones, but these are the ones referenced throughout the presentation. And do you have any questions? I threw a lot out at you.
Yeah, so I would just say this, without offering any direction or messing with your work program or anything, I am interested in learning more. I would say I am more intrigued on the high-level, more rapid kind of opportunities that we would use, how we would take what we're currently doing and enhance it so that it is one of several factors that we use to consider the decisions we make, but maybe more intentionally. I think we do it almost a little unintentionally right now as we have the peer review team and things like that. I maybe get a little more intentional, but what I'm offering, Leanne, is that I would have real interest in learning a little more about it and what it might look like for Story County. Marty, thoughts?
I guess I'm more in the weeds, being on the board of health and dealing with some tertiary issues in regards to mass casualties and whatnot. So already there on a, you know, this is kind of tangible, but it's just like certainly this is something I'll bring back and see where on an implementation basis on it going forward.
Sure. Yeah, so I, I mean, we're probably oversimplifying here, but I'm viewing this as kind of a potential LEISA score when we're dealing with a HAGG property, but kind of that LEISA score, but dealing with health and the impact of health on the decision-making.
That's actually, no, that's, in my mind, if we were to investigate looking at it, LEISA came immediately to mind and thought we couldn't manipulate that in a different way.
Good. You need anything else from us today?
I just wanted to make sure we, I, you know, I've been doing the research over the past few months, I need to get in front of you guys so that I knew whether or not I could leave it at bay or continue.
I would tell you, I do a little bit of in-near office follow-up on this, because I do have some questions to bear for a moment, so.
Yeah, I think it's worth our education. Good, thank you. Next, public forum number two. It's an opportunity for members of the public to comment on anything you want to comment on. You wish to do so, come right up to the microphone.
I'm going to mention that we had the camera and again today. So those that do watch.
Are we close to the end of this? Where, do we, do we know where we are on new monitor and stuff like that? We're getting, we're getting RFP quotes, okay. But we're in process of trying to get all this straightened out.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Absolutely. Note that the cameras, oh, you want me to note it in my little post thing? Okay, I'll note it in my post thing. Marty? The Ason Assignments Committee Meeting Updates.
The night I've got asked to be on this board, a burly man named August Austin Harrington shoved his iPhone in front of me, drove me into the hallway out here, and.
Burles.
Burly guy.
Yeah.
And we had that time spent with him, he did a great job, he told the story, ran it right down the middle. So when we lost him, we got a new Austin, and didn't know where we're going to get that quality of reporter. I think we can say a year-plus later that we did. And I got to tell you, Austin Cannon, I want to use my time on my lay Ason, point of the meeting, say thank you for what you've done on behalf of the county. You told the story well, you informed the county to what we do here, and look forward to meeting your replacement in the hopes that he does as good as you in the last Austin.
Yeah, so I just echo that. I think, I think we've been the beneficiary of a, of a young, new reporter who really does things the right way, and really tries to understand what he's writing about and give it its fairer look as he possibly can. You're going to do great things. Really, really proud to watch where you're going. I hate that you're not going to be around here as much anymore, but hey, I'm telling you, there's a spot in the Des Moines metro for the Board of Supervisors reporting out, so come back and visit us sometime, but congratulations and good luck to you. And then the other thing I would note for two reasons, one, in case anybody is curious about Supervisor Olson, but secondly, and more importantly, because I know that Supervisor Olson will be listening to the audio, that Supervisor Olson left us this week, well, for the next two weeks, to be in Hawaii. And so my image right now. And so, my image right now is that Loris is on the North Shore, which is where they have the really, really big waves, and she is shooting a curl right now on a surfboard, just having a blast, and so Supervisor Olson, we hope you're having fun, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. If there's nothing else, I take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I would adjourn.